6:00 PM. I am officially opening the, this planning commission for, meeting for July 12th. Good evening and on be, July, wait, August. Oh my goodness. August, I'm looking at the minutes. August 9, 2022. Good evening and on behalf of the City of Independence, welcome to the planning commission meeting for this evening. For those who wish to speak tonight, please remember to address all comments and questions to the chair and keep your comments brief and on point. If you agree with the previous comment, simply indicate your agreement and move on. To expedite tonight's meeting, I will ask those of you who wish to testify or believe they might to please stand and be sworn in. Before we do that, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance and then we will get back to that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there's anyone here who wishes to speak or think that they might like to speak, will you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, please answer I do. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. The first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Reviewing the minutes from July 12th and July 26th. Give you a minute to refresh on it and see if you remember anything. Or if anything stands out. And when ready... I didn't do roll call. Speeding ahead. No, I know. I just didn't do the normal roll call. That's okay. I guess we can do it when we vote. Okay. I would take a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Okay. We will take the vote on the minutes.
Commissioner Bryce. Excuse me. Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes.
Do we take roll?
We did not.
She's going to.
Okay.
Yeah. I jumped ahead. Consent agenda for the planning commission minutes, July 12th and July 26th, 2022 have been approved. And before we move to the continued case, let's do roll.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Wiley.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Chairman McLean.
Here. Thank you. Okay. I am opening the, the case to be continued to public. And I would entertain a motion to continue case number 22-125-09 rezoning-PUD at 2350 South Hayden Street.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to postpone case 22-125-09 rezoning 2350 South Hayden Street to the August 23rd planning meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Case 22-125-09 has been continued till August 23rd, 2022, planning commission meeting. Oh, yeah, we should take a vote. I'm so sorry. I've been gone for two, two times. I'm like a little rusty. Let's take a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Case number 22-125-09 has, will be continued until August 23rd, 2022. Okay.
Chairman McLean.
Yes.
It would be appropriate for the board to have a vote to close the public hearing.
Okay. 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 We've never done that before. So how do we?
Would we close before, just that? If the purpose, Commissioner Nesbit, is to open and close the public hearing for sole purpose of continuing it to a definite certain, so since it was opened by the board, it shouldn't be closed before the board.
Okay. May I have a, so it requires a motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I would take a motion to close the public hearing on the continued case.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we close the public hearing for case 22-125-09, 2350 South Hayden Street. The case that will be continued to August 23rd, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
We are ready for a vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. The public hearing for case, continued case number 22-125-09 has been approved. Okay. Next, opening the public hearing for case 22-125-10 rezoning PUD at 8718 and 8718 and a half, 8720 and 8720 and a half, East US 24 Highway. A request by Tim Pierman to rezone the property from R12 to family residential to R18-PUD, moderate density residential slash planned unit development, and approve a preliminary plat. So with that, staff, will you give a recommendation?
Yes. Mr. Pierman has owned this property for about a year or so. It's at the very extreme western end of the city, maybe 200 feet from the city limits along the north side of 24 Highway. You can see from the vicinity map, it's circled. That's the city limit right there in that gray area line. And 24 Highway, that is directly putting this to the site. The current zoning is R12. It has been zoned R12 since at least 1965. It was actually zoned R2 until July 2009, when the city changed, adopted the new zoning ordinance, and it became R12. So the uses haven't changed. The, really, the title or of the zoning district hasn't really changed. It's just the, the noinculture. From what we can tell, the, the first reference we have to this property was the setting of a master water meter in 1963. Later, electric meters and water meters, sub-meters were also installed for the dwelling units on the property. This application is consistent with the Independence for All Strategic Plan and the Comprehensive Guiding Land Use Principles. There's really no historic and architectural features with this site. All the utilities are existing and connected to the building and been operation for a number of years. And we'll discuss the parking service and the environmental issues later. This is the comprehensive plan, as you can see. This is low, I guess it's called residential neighborhoods, residential properties on the north side of the 24 Iowa, as you can see here. Pretty much the whole area is on that, is a comp planed out for that use. This is the zoning for the property. The, the property that's immediately to the west and joins the west side of this site, the planning commission discussed at a public meeting a month ago perhaps about their wanting to change the zoning on that red, red piece there, that's partly in Kansas City, Missouri, from C2 to C3 to, for a semi-auto, semi-repair facility. The brown to the right is a multifamily high-density zoning, but it actually contains single-family homes mostly, with some duplexes. This is the site. As you can see, it is, the building sits on the southeast, excuse me, southwest corner of the site. There's a little parking area just south of the building next to the highway. Most of the site is actually vacant, although the northern half of the property is, is a ravine with trees and brush and all that sort of thing. It's not really buildable. This is the front of the building. We're looking directly north at the front of the site. See, it's a two-story brick building. You've got units on the two sides, on the bottom, on the outside. Those are the units, the doors for the outside. The door in the middle is actually leads to a stairway which goes upstairs for the two units that are above on the second floor. This is the side of the building. It's been painted green. You can see the parking lot there is fairly recent paving on the concrete, not too bad, good condition. There's six spaces for a fourplex. You only need four. So they providing a couple extra spaces. That screen fence on the left side of the building there is, actually goes to the backyard. Not sure what the history of that is. That fence panel you see on the extreme left is actually part of the fencing from the neighbor's property that was sought to be rezoned a month ago or so. Here, we're looking at the east end of the building. Again, you can see the number of spaces in front and the units on top. The building side is also painted green. The fence there is, there's a chain link portion of it between that and the privacy fence. You can see there's one trash enclosure there. There's, there will be four when there's a, a four tenants in the, in the building. So they don't use a dumpster. They use individual rollouts. This is taken from that fence, looking into the backyard. You can see it's all level here. The ravine starts right about where that tree line is. There's a small building addition attached onto the backyard, which is on the left, that is just a shed that's, or addition that's used to keep lawn mowers and that sort of thing. Okay. This is the property that's immediately to the east. I think that's a four duplex, but I'm not really sure. It could have more than that, more than two units. Most of the houses to the east of this site are single-family. There may be a duplex or two mixed in there. Here, we're looking east down 24 Highway. You're familiar with this location. There's on the south side of the road there, it's, it's pretty significant hill. There's a subdivision at the top, but there's really not much between that and the subdivision. Again, single-family homes on the left. Okay. This is the property directly across on the site. There's a little pole in there. I'm not sure why it's there. That property is on commercial, has never been developed. This is to the southwest, that is used car lots, it's been there many years. You don't go very far to your right, which is the west, and you go outside of the city limits. Here, we're looking west up 24 Highway. Again, the city limits are just right down there, probably about where that toll, toll phone pole there is on the right, where it goes into Kansas City, Missouri. And then this is the building that's immediately, property that's immediately adjacent to this site on the east side. It is, it's partly, I think the building is partly in Kansas City, Missouri. Property to the east of the building is obviously in Independence. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request with the following conditions being included with the preliminary site plan, which in this case consists of photographs of the site, as there was no site plan completed and submitted by the applicant. First condition is extend, extend the existing fence further north, another four sections to add to, to the screening to the west, onto the east side of the lot. And then the number of dwelling units in the existing building is limited to four units. The addition of another building on the site will, shall require preliminary development plan approval. We'll go back here and take a look at the fencing. You can see, well, you can't really see it very well, but the panel there, those go down to the east property line, and then there's about three panel, three fence panels, and then the fence stops. So we're requesting that be extended, another four sections. And that was all the comments I have. If you have any questions?
Thank you.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you. Does anyone have questions of the city staff before we ask the applicant to come forward? Hearing none. Will the applicant come forward, please? And state your name and your address for us.
Commissioner Pierman, 5357 North Pennington Avenue, Kennesaw, Missouri.
It's what happens to tall people. You just have to.
Commissioner Pierman, 5357 North Pennington Avenue, Kennesaw, Missouri, 64119.
Thank you. Tell us anything you would like us to know about the project and why you're doing it and?
Well, I have an auto repair shop. It's a building to the left.
Okay.
The rezone was once building five years back, and I get to keep ours up here, rented out. I just have a hard time getting tenants to pay their rent, so I just got frustrated with it, and I just wanted to sell it, because I had money I had into it. At the time, I just sold a couple of things for a couple of hours. Did you check the situation?
Yeah, I'm not.
You set it up on the next step.
Okay. There you go. He was having problems with the collecting rent, and he was just tired of the process of trying to collect rent from people. So he's an auto repair, I'm an auto repair person, and he was in my shop, and he said, repairs done on his car, and we just talked, and one thing led to another, and he said, I'd like to sell it for what I got into it, and one thing led to another. And I had just recently sold two rental houses of mine and purchased a property with what I sold those houses for. I did a lot of the, quite a bit of exterior work. I bought it in October. Was a little tight on money, but I did a lot of the exterior work on it, painting, I put siding on it. I repaid the parking lot, cleaned up the weeds, and, you know, made it look a lot more presentable. And I didn't do much background checking on what, when it was built or something like that, but I did know it had four meters, four meters for electric, for the water and the gas. And comes spring, it's winter, heading into winter time, which I'm, winter time is a little tight on money sometimes, so I wait till fall or springtime. In May, I hired a contractor to see if I could pull permits to get the downstairs going, because upstairs was already rented out. And that's when I found I had to pull permits to, which I knew that anyway, but to go farther with it, it had to be rezoned.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Now, you, are you good with adding fence screening?
There's no problem.
Okay. Don't check that.
So the four units are going in the existing building, correct?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The four units are going in the existing building, correct?
Oh, yeah. I'm not gonna do, no, just gonna stay away, there's no existing, just a back lot, just for that one, for stories. I won't be adding on to anything.
Okay.
Permanently, never.
Any other questions? Thank you. You may be seated. You did a good job.
Thank you.
We have no questions. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. The public portion of this case is closed. And commissioners, do we have any discussion or I would entertain a motion?
I just have a quick question, just to clarify to here. The reason why this is being rezoned is because it's zoned for two fam, you know, two-family residential, but the actual use is a fourplex for four families. So we're just catching up the zoning to be?
That's right.
Reflective of what's actually in place.
Once the units go vacant for a time period, it, you know, it loses nonconformity.
Okay.
So we're just trying to straighten that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the case 22-125-10 rezoning 8718 through 8720 and a half, East US 24 Highway.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Just want to be clear, that's with conditions.
Yes, with conditions.
We are ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. Congratulations. Case number 22-125-10 rezoning for 8718 through 8720 and a half on US 24 Highway has passed. Best of luck. Next case, 22-114 rezoning of 1711 East 23rd Street. Request by Ashley Smith to rezone the property from R12 to family residential to C2 general commercial. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Okay. You can see from the vicinity map here, this is a location about halfway between Kings Highway and Lee Summit Road, basically just west of the Discount Tire that's at the entrance to Hy-Vee. And then, of course, on the other side is McBee's Coffee and Car Wash that's currently under construction. And this, this lot sits in between those, those properties. The current zoning of this lot with this small existing house is R12 two-family residential. Of course, prior to our ordinance in 2009, R12 was R2, so it was still, prior to that time, two-family residential. As far as the property history, the 0.19 acre lot has had this designation since 1965 and has been in use as a single-family residential unit throughout that entire time. And in earlier times, they've been part of a much larger tract that had been used for agricultural uses. The occup, the house has been occupied until this beginning of this year. And the owner of the car wash is, got possession of the property now and intends to raise the home for expansion of the car wash use, expanding specifically the parking lot onto that property. So here in the analysis section, this proposal is consistent with the Independence for All Strategic Plan, which envisions increased economic prosperity of the community, and it meets the strategy to recruit business. As far as the zoning of the property here, the applicant's property that they've acquired is, is in that area in the blue there, as you can see. So there's this island of R12 that exists in this area that's all commercial now. The map, for some reason, is not colored in that spot to the west, but that's supposed to be red as well. But that, that's the location of the special use for the car wash. And we'll look at the Comprehensive Plan, Guiding Land Use Principles now. The Comprehensive Plan is consistent with the guiding principle to foster development opportunities within the city to revitalize used or underused property. This, it meets the policies to encourage redevelopment or adaptive reuse of vacant or underutilized sites and encourage investment in our existing neighborhoods. And you can see the Comprehensive Plan actually envisions the area for residential, although the pattern of zoning along that part of the corridor on that south side is, is commercial already and sown that way. As far as historic and archaeological sites, this, this property is not deemed of historic value. Of course, the utilities are readily available, being right there on the, the 23rd Street right away and adjacent to other development. This is just infill there. As far as building permit issues. It's, again, the expansion of a, a parking, proposed parking lot for that large property to the west that's being developed now as a car wash. And so, let's see. Lost my train of thought here. So you can see from the aerial here, this is before construction began, obviously, to the west there. And on the east side, you have, have the Discount Tire located adjacent to the signal intersection there for Hy-Vee. As far as stormwater issues for the impermeable, impermeable surface that would be created by this parking lot, this lies just north of the tract that's been designated by the McBee Landing Development for the stormwater detention basin that will be just to the south. There's, there was a traffic study that was, that has been conducted and amended as, as the proposed project to the south has grown. By Trans Systems, prepared a study for the proposed commercial and residential development, that is McBee Landing and Windmills Estates. The study included trip generation estimates, capacity analyst, analysis, and a summary of those findings. But this small lot, given it's an expansion of a existing use that had already been accounted for in that study, will not impact this development at all or that study at all. As far as access to this parking lot, of course, the accesses to this parking lot are the accesses to McBee's Coffee and Car Wash, which includes the driveway that's aligned with Woodbury Street, as well as an accessible drive from the south. So as you can see here on the drawing, where it says Lot 1, that is the car wash that's currently under construction. You can see the entrance off the north there, and also access that will come off the south, as well as this connection that'd go over to Discount Tire and provide access to the signaled light or the signaled entrance to Hy-Vee there farther to the east. And this is, this is a little bit difficult to see, but this is the preliminary development plan for the entire development of that area, so you can see how that fits into what's already proposed. So this is the little house itself. Looking directly at it from 23rd Street, and it's, it's driveway and the large tree that's in front there, you can see. So this, this is the car wash currently under construction up on that hillside there. And this is looking westward down And this is looking westward down 23rd Street to the northwest. There were some of the residential that's right across the street, and of course, this directly across from the house on the north. And then this is looking east back toward Hy-Vee, and of course, Discount Tire right immediately there to the left behind the truck. And this is the access drive that goes back to that house that no longer sits behind this tire store. So this is the backyard of the little house here. And then this is from the backside looking back north at its, at its rear. So staff recommends approval of this rezoning, and ready to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
One question for you guys, and I've been looking at this for weeks now. It seems like that car wash is too close to 23rd Street. Has it got the right distance off the road?
Commercial zoning from the right away is 15 feet.
So it's only 15 feet from...
I mean, it can be, that's why I'm saying it can be 15 feet.
Okay, but is there a state right away or anything on there? Is there a state right away that they gotta be back so far?
Yeah, yeah, I'm back from that state right away, and the state right away is a little bit behind that sidewalk, couple of feet, not very far.
I just, it just looks like that car's coming right out on 23rd Street when it exits that car wash. And I mean, I don't know if anybody else knows that or not, but it just, it just looks that way, so I didn't know if that's something, somebody's checked on to make sure they did that right, or...
(inaudible).
I know, but didn't, I just wanted to know if somebody dug it right after they did all that. That's what I've wanted. I mean, it's a little late now, but you probably can't see it in your pictures, I was looking there.
I mean...
But I mean, it just, what, it just appears to me it's right on top of the road when they're coming out, that's just...
It's, it's quite a ways back.
I'm just curious, that's all I want.
Nothing wrong with curiosity. Does anybody have any other questions for staff? Okay, as I understand it, the applicant is not here to speak on behalf of the project. That's correct, right?
Yes, that's correct, but they're wanting to go ahead anyway, so...
Okay. So we will go ahead and, and ask if there's anybody in the room who would wish to speak for this case. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none, this case is, the public hearing on this case is closed. And commissioners, any more discussion, questions, or I would entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve case 22-100-14 rezoning 1711 East 23rd Street South, is that what it is? With, there's no condition.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that's been seconded, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case number 22-100-14 rezoning for 1711 East 23rd Street South has been approved. Okay. So question, do I close, do we have to vote to close the public hearing before we go to other business, or are we good?
No, chairman, you've already closed the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other business, the training that we were going to have is going to be continued until September. What was that date?
It's the first meeting of September, which is the...
I guess I'm still thinking it's July, so I'm not gonna ask...
September 13th.
Okay, September 13th. Okay. Any other business that the city needs to inform us on? Nope? Okay. Well, anybody else for the greater good?
(inaudible).
Oh, yes. The election of officers, since Billy's not here, we thought we, we would just kind of wait until we hear back from him and see what he is able to do and when he's able to be with us, out of respect, so. We just decided kind of not to put a date on it, because I just don't know how he's doing. I think he's doing well, and proceeding with his healing, but I just don't know the status of when he'll be able to be actually with us, so. We'll wait and find that out, and then we can come up with a date. Is that okay with everyone? Okay.
(inaudible).
Yeah. Yeah.
(inaudible).
Mr. Mc, Mr. Nesbit, can you speak in the microphone more?
Sorry, I don't have it on. They're proposing another car wash for next meeting, and I didn't know if everybody wanted to check on what they think about that before we come to the meeting, because that's gonna be three of them on 39th Street, pretty much. And I didn't know if anybody's seen that yet or not.
I had not seen it yet.
So, I didn't know. That's correct, I saw that, I think, on the agenda.
The one that's proposed for the next meeting is one of the outlots for Menards.
Right, yeah.
Right next to the Dutch Brothers, which is under construction.
Right.
So it's actually closer to Jackson Drive and Little Blue Parkway than 39th Street.
Are they started on the one, I guess, down on Independence Center, is that right?
Yep, sure did.
Okay, I just wondered if that's what they're digging up there?
Yeah, I, well, they've broken ground. Yeah, I, I, last time I drove down 39th Street, I noticed the pavement's been busted up.
Right.
Yeah, so...
Okay. I'm just, I'm just wanting everybody to check on that, make sure you guys, I mean, that's three of them now going on 39th Street there, within what, mile radius, two mile radius, so. I know we had a little discussion on the last one, and...
Yeah.
So I'm just letting you guys know what I think.
I, and I appreciate that. I do think that, and we kind of talked about it previously, Jordan and I, is that maybe at some point, we really do kind of need to have our own study session. I'm not sure what's allowed exactly for the planning commission and how that works, because we've never done it before. But, but we've talked about, you know, car washes, tattoo shops, something else we've...
Pawn shops.
Pawn shops, car lots, car lots, used car lots. So we've kind of talked about some of these issues, and it might be time that we have a study session and kind of talk about those things and what, what we would like to recommend to the city on parameters, like, for instance, the used car lots, how much acreage do you have to have in order to have one? You know, just some of those things that maybe we ask them to start looking into. But I feel like it just needs more than just this. We just need like, a study session, where we could really talk about these things.
I mean, staff, do you guys have any ideas on how many car washes there should be in a certain area?
Well, we can recommend that, can't we? Put together a recommendation, like we did for Airbnbs, which is, there's a, you know, this many allowed within this block.
Yeah, yeah.
Best practices for other cities our size, that type of...
Sure, we can check it. I'm not sure how much information we can get from other cities as far as the number of car, car washes. Guess we could check through their business licensing to see. But those other uses that you mentioned, those are all controlled uses, so to speak. There's a number by code on the maximum that you can have in the city.
Yeah.
Car washes doesn't have that, obviously. And as far as the car sales lot, when the code was originally adopted in 2009, there was an acre and a half minimum size for a used car lot. Later, it was modified to, if you had less than an acre and a half, or were within a certain distance from residential property, you could get a special use permit to get around that. Well, as you know, the city is very corridor centric, and just about anywhere you go is gonna be within 200 feet or so of residential property. So pretty much all the used car lots that we get now are special use permits. And I don't have a total on the number, but it's significant.
A lot. It feels like a lot, it's like everything that's come before us has been special.
Rick says it's about 60 to 70 used car lots. Some of those are obviously car lots that have, that do auto repair and that sort of thing with that.
So is that something we could do, is have, and how do we go about that, our own study session of some sort, so that we can kind of discuss the things that come up and drive us crazy, or...
Well, unfortunately, this would have been a good thing to, good night to have that after this short meeting.
Yes, I know. I know.
But other times, the, the planning commission has in the past done special study sessions, and they just kind of pick an off week.
Okay.
Or pick an agenda that is rather light, like tonight.
Okay.
And just do it at the end of the agenda, or a special meeting for it.
Okay.
We have to notice it up and everything, just like a normal meeting, and have it open and so forth.
Okay. Well, we'll work on that, because I think that that's not a bad idea. Okay. Do it. We need to make lists. I think we talked about this before, and we just keep pushing it away. Okay, with that, the planning commission meeting is called at 6:41 PM. Good night.